And this Betsy join us by Zoom. Y'all hear us? All right, so we got a quorum. Well, Mr. Abrams, would you say invocation for us, please, sir?
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we come at this hour praising your holy name and thanking you for your many blessings. We thank dear God for all the wonderful things that you do for us to continue to do. We pray God for this meeting. Bless those who gather here. And God our minds to better think and our hearts to better love, that we may do the things that are right. And pleading for the citizens of Newberry County. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we were furnished by email some minutes from last meeting, as well as you've got a copy here tonight. If you had a chance to review them, I want her to look at them a few minutes after you've done that, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, multiple seconds. All in favor of approving the minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
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 Two Zoom it, I'll Zoom taking care of two. All right, minutes approved as written with no corrections. Our first item of business tonight is case MA 01-05-17-22. A rezoning request for one real estate parcel totaling 0.779 acres located at 35 Oak Hollow Road, Newberry, South Carolina, to be rezoned from RS Single Family Residential to R2 Rural. Tax map number 395-39. Ms. Katie?
This request is to rezone one property totaling 7,800 acres located at 35 Oak Hollow Road, Newberry, from RS Single Family Residential to R2 Rural for the potential of a manufactured home. The future land use map from the comprehensive plan shows this property to be in the economic development overlay. And the definition of our economic development overlay is land areas that either are or have the potential to be economic development centers that include such uses as commercial, industrial, higher-density residential, public, institutional, or related infrastructure. The staff recommends denial of the request from RS Single Family Residential to R2 Rural as it is not supported by our comprehensive plan. The proposed development is not consistent with the higher-density residential character of the economic development overlay.
And this parcel is kind of inside an existing type development appears?
Correct. It's not a established HOA, but it is a community, yes.
Are most of those lots or all of those lots residential or?
They are residential, yes.
So this would, if this were approved as R2, it would be the only one in that?
You meaning a manufactured home?
Yes.
There are a couple manufactured homes existing that were put out there before zoning was adopted.
So they're 20 years old?
At least, yeah.
Or 30 years, okay.
I have a question. So the ones that are already there, if for whatever reason they're taken off, at that point, would they have to re-up like change zoning to replace it with another?
They would have six months, they would have six months from the time that power was pulled to replace it. After six months, then they would have to either do a site built or modular or try for a rezoning, yes.
Okay, but if they did it within the six months, so if one of them came in and said, okay, I want a new one, take this one out, and within six months they put a new one up, they can put another?
Correct.
Another one in there in this place.
Correct.
So it's not like, so the ones that have in there, they potentially could stay there forever?
Correct.
Depending how quickly people do it.
Correct.
So it's not like they're all, okay.
Very detailed report y'all provided this time.
Yes.
Basically, the rezoning would not be in, would be contrary to our comprehensive plan, correct?
Correct, it would.
And all the adjacent lots in this community or RS?
RS.
And this would be a deviation from comprehensive plan as well as a deviation from the adjacent lots?
Yes.
And the community at large?
Yes.
So the lot is vacant now?
It is vacant right now.
But the only reasons, the only reason the ones with current homes, like the one that they want to put up in here, are zoned RS, wasn't really because of what's happening today, it's to prevent something from the future, correct?
I didn't understand.
I can't, yeah.
Understand.
Okay, so you just said if we rezoned this, even though by rezoning it, we allow them to put up something that other lots have, correct? And what I'm saying is these lots were all with these homes already on it before it was zoned. So they were zoned RS even though they don't really meet the RS qualifications because those homes were previously there.
Some of these homes, right, but some of these homes have been put there since the zoning. Not all of them were established prior to zoning.
So, right, but I'm talking about the, I guess, the modular homes like they want to put up, correct?
If it's a manufactured home, it would have been prior to 2001 when zoning was in effect.
And that's what I'm saying. When the manufactured homes now that are there were put there before the zoning, and even though they are zoned a certain way, they're technically only that way because they're grandfathered in.
Correct.
Right, which, okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Any other questions for staff on this? Would anybody like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Please come to the mic because we record everything.
Hi, my name is Laquanda Elkins, and I'm the one that's trying to get it rezoned to put a modular, I mean, a trailer in the location.
Yes, ma'am. For your occupancy?
For me and my family.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have other family that lives there?
Yeah, my grandma's, well, my mama stays there now, but my grandma will stay in there until she passed away.
In that community?
Right next door.
Right next door?
Yes, sir.
What type unit are the, do they live in?
It's a brick house.
Brick house. All right. Any other questions of this one lady?
When I bought the land, I didn't know that it had to be a certain house that I had to put there.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought maybe I can put whatever I wanted to put there. And by me putting a trailer there, I didn't, well, I didn't know about the zoning because it's a trailer right across the street from my, my land, and there's several trailers down the street and up the street. Yes, sir.
When did you buy the land?
Three years ago.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on?
My name's Robert Hunter, and I live next door too.
Yes.
That property. But I want to know, I don't know much about zoning. I mean, I live, what's it zone about? I don't know much about it. But she's trying to put a trailer there. And y'all cannot put a trailer there? She not supposed to, or what?
That's correct. Based, what zoning kind of is, is to make sure that we have certain type houses or businesses or whatever kind in certain locations, and the plan for, for the community as well as the county. And that's really what zoning is. You have your manufactured homes in one area or certain type homes and type businesses, and, and that's the reason for kind of having zoning, planning out what it is. So people can expect, you know, what's going to be next to them. And that's really the purpose of zoning and why it was initiated back in 2001.
Okay, well.
Expectancy of what's going, who going to be your neighbor, basically.
Okay, but the next house down there is her grandmother's house, and the next house is where I live and everything. And we not fighting against her putting a trailer there?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we act, I want to look, I see on, on White and Road, there's two trailers that side by side there. And why is that?
Well, it was a lot of things before zoning was ever initiated in the county. And then it was really just kind of making sure we have a uniform type folks, homes in certain areas.
Because down there, there's another house down there worth a whole lot of money, you know. But thing about it, she put a trailer there, it just sat there now. But she put a trailer there, she would pay tax on her trailer, so that they would be having to kind of sound, wouldn't they?
Yes.
So are you saying you're against the zoning or are you against?
I'm not against, I live next door to that, to that property.
So you're in favor of having her?
No, I'm in favor of putting a trailer there because she, let me tell you something. We got a lot of poor people here that can't do what the wealthy man can, you know what I mean? And so we need to try to look out for the poor people too, you know what I mean? Because of, we need to play the state too. Sometimes we can't get what, they're going to put a new house there. We don't qualify for that. You know, what we do qualify for may be a trailer, you know, so. And we satisfied with everything, but you know, I'm like, what's wrong, you know?
Yes. Any more questions or comments?
I had a question for Katie, but I don't have a question for you.
No question, no?
Okay.
You're welcome. Stand there, Mr. Hunter, in case somebody changes their mind.
Okay.
Yeah, if you mentioned that some manufactured homes, trailers, whatever we want to call them, were kind of grandfathered in when the zoning came in. If someone owned one of those properties and their manufactured home was in disrepair and they had to replace it, would they be able to replace it with a manufactured home? Or don't they come under the new zoning and they're not able to replace it?
They have six months to do it.
So they could.
But then after that, it would revert to our, someone could not put a manufactured home. Okay, so that may be what you said before, but my hearing's so bad, I need to hear it twice. Okay.
Okay, any other question or comments? Anybody else like to speak? Entertain a motion one way or the other to approve or deny, whichever way y'all feel. Y'all like to?
I make a motion to approve. I second that.
We have a motion and a to approve and a second to approve. All call for the question. All in favor of approving the request to rezone it from RS to R2? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One, 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 two, Mr. Victor? Yes? No, yes, no, no. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven yeses. All opposed to rezoning? One, one opposed, so it is passed with the rezoning request. And it, we're not the last saying this. We just make the recommendation. County Council will, will take this matter up further. So if you wish to continue with this, you need to catch.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
About being a trailer there, then you don't want no trailer beside a house, don't you say that?
Well, it was zoned for a certain type house, but or for it to be a stick-built basically house. And then this will allow the trailer to go on that lot, yes.
I know I tried to get a trailer on some land before, and they said that the septic tank is too close together, something like that, and water running like that, so what, I'm trying to find out more about zoning, though. I don't know much about zoning.
Well, you might need to check with, check with Ms. Katie or the staff to specific item. So you, she can explain it better, and you can show your specific location and ask specific questions.
I know, I know in town that there was, there's a, there's a trailer of, two new trailer put there. So I don't wonder why I could have put a trailer there.
Well, and see, the town has their own thing too. We kind of, the county unincorporated areas, we help out prosperity in primary. But city of Newberry, if you're inside the city limits, Ms. Katie probably can tell you the right person to talk with about it. But we wouldn't have anything to do with it in the city limits. They play by a different set of rules, well, a different set of rules, but we don't have anything to do with the city's zoning and planning requests.
I was all concerned by it because of, I just hate to see somebody buy land like that and can't put nothing on it.
Well, yes, sir.
Okay, that's all.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Y'all welcome to stay if you like, or y'all, we got some other business. If y'all like to go ahead and like I said, keep up with the county council's items to move on. Thank y'all for coming. Yes. All right, the next item of business is a consideration of land development agreement ordinance. Number 05-16-2022. How you doing? Good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Christopher Englesey, and I'm your county administrator. I've been working with Katie and staff to get this prepared for, for you, for your consideration tonight. This is an ordinance that will be inserted into the zoning ordinance to authorize county council to enter into land development agreements. And state law, you know, the General Assembly passed a law, section 6-3110 of the South Carolina Code of Laws. And it is the Land Development Agreement Authorization Act. And it authorizes local governments, municipalities, counties to enter into these land development agreements under certain conditions. And one of those conditions is that the proposed development has to be a minimum of 25 acres. So we're talking about significant types of land development activity. And what's really beneficial about county council being able to do a land development deal like this is that we can negotiate things with a potential development. For example, an infrastructure need for that development may need some assistance from the county to run a sewer line or to get water, electricity to a site. And that's where we might be able to partner with that development. The flip side of that is that we can negotiate things like green space so that a development has a place for its residents to recreate that's really in close proximity to where they may be living in the development. Or we might negotiate some commercial, some neighborhood services, commercial type uses within that development. Or we might be able to negotiate a land donation for a school site or for a firehouse or for some other civic purpose. Without the development agreement ordinance on the books, we're not able to get to the negotiating table. And a developer will, you know, take advantage of every entitlement that is available to them and not incorporate the things that we might think should be incorporated, like the green space, like the civic uses, like the infrastructure needs, making sure they get done. So this will authorize council through staff to negotiate these types of land development. Doesn't mean that we have to enter into an agreement, it's just that this is a step to allow these types of negotiations to happen. So it's another tool in our planning toolbox to get the kind of good development that's going to benefit the community.
Will this be a step towards getting like impact fees or stuff, things like that?
We could actually negotiate an impact fee within the development agreement. So for example, you could, council could negotiate, say you're going to build 200 homes. We want you to pay a fee that would be for public safety. And so we would tack a fee onto the permit fee for that. That could be negotiated. Development impact fees outside of this development agreement has to go through another process, starting with a study, and that study would give the rational basis for what the fee might be. And then that would go through an ordinance process that would come to planning commission, then the council. And then that would have a period of time before it sunsets and apply a development impact fee. Same thing there, it could be for traffic improvements, it could be for fire and public safety improvements, could be for school impact fees, and parks and recreation can be included in there as well. We don't have that ordinance. We've been talking a little bit, especially in the realm of public safety, about getting an impact fee. But that process will take us about a year, year and a half, once we start it. And we haven't even started it yet, but there are some conversations internally about getting there. That being said, if you have a development agreement ordinance on the books, we could, we could negotiate a fee within the development agreement.
Well, I think it's a step forward, particularly with what we had discussed last week with something so significant that it would have changed the character of a neighborhood and not the whole town and out of the whole area that I think some upfront discussion on particularly something like that needed to have taken place. And I think this step forward with doing that, I think.
Hopefully, something that will give you all some peace of mind is that this ordinance requires two, not just one, but two public hearings, one of which has to happen at planning commission and another one that happens at county council. So it's very unusual that two public hearings are required, but land development agreements are required by statute to have two public hearings. And this sets forth that one of them happens here. They could both happen at county council, or they could both happen here, but this kind of splits it and does one here. So that should give you some peace of mind that you're going to get some good public input. In my experience, if we sit down with a developer and we negotiate a development agreement, we're probably going to do some public outreach, depending on the size of development. We'll probably engage some public input through some charrettes or stakeholder meetings and get that input even before they get to planning commission. Certainly, that's the guidance that I will be giving those types of developments. But two public hearings, that's a big deal and hopefully gives you some peace of mind that this process will be transparent and open as, as much as it can be.
I'd like to have some time to review it before we vote on it, if that's possible.
But what's being presented that we need to vote on tonight?
The draft of the ordinance is, is on your agenda.
Well, we're ahead now.
So I can just give you a little summary of what it says. The 25 acre minimum requirement is enumerated here. Some other things it requires is a conceptual plan. The description of public facilities that will be required as part of the development, things like roads and drainage and, roads and drainage and any other public need like sewer or water will also have to be included in the narrative and in the agreement. Any, if there's any historic or environmentally sensitive features on the property, they have to be addressed within the development agreement. Topographical maps have to be prepared. They have to go through a site analysis with a registered engineer or surveyor showing major circulation systems, so the traffic flow. They create, like I said, a conceptual plan at a minimum. And then they, you know, have a draft agreement for consideration. So these are just the minimum standards that are set forth here. And this basically mirrors what the statutory requirements are. It's almost, it's almost verbatim from what the state standards are. Yes, sir.
How are utilities like electricity, gas, water handled with respect to these agreements?
Well, we haven't had one in Newberry County, so there's no precedent to look to here locally. In my experience, they're handled a variety of ways. Sometimes the developer will foot the entire cost of infrastructure improvements necessary to reach a site. Sometimes the cost is shared between, like the sewer authority might have an interest in tapping 200, 300, 800 homes. So they may step up and make an investment to run a line, you know, to get to that site. Same with electricity, they may have an interest. So depending on the densities and the numbers, there may be enough incentive for them to invest. Sometimes, especially in the area of roads, the county will be asked to step up and provide some infrastructure cost. There's another statute called the Residential Improvement District. It is lovingly referred to as the RID District, R-I-D. And it's a financing tool for local governments where if we do, if we are asked to finance an infrastructure improvement on the front end of a development, we, through the RID District, we can recoup that through a special assessment on the post-construction or the post-development sites. So say, for example, the site's 70, 80% built out. We can then apply a special assessment to recoup any upfront public investment that was made. For example, if the county was asked to build a road and it cost a million dollars and there were 500 homes being served by that road, a special assessment would be put on there post-development for five years to recover that, to make the county taxpayers whole, including any interest or bond fees that were made. So that's another tool that's out there for, for funding those infrastructure projects.
Okay, are those then typically included in the agreement?
Yes, sir.
All written?
We would get the sewer authority to the table, the electric company to the table.
Thirty percent, yeah, okay.
To some degree, that would be, at least the framework of that would be in the development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I would hope in all of this, we talked with the school districts, my wife's on the school board. And when I said what went on last week, and she about out of stroke, you know, with, you know, they, they made a great effort in trying to get out of all portables with, and that some of this would throw all that into jeopardy with building something.
Hundred percent agree.
A development that big would require three new schools.
Yes, I mean, a lot of that should be thought about too in the upfront. Especially like something like that, that kind of stunned me all. And then if you count houses alongside the road that doesn't require all of that, it's getting a significant amount, which is good for the county, but it is going to have some impact too. But could, is it a problem if we could study this a little bit more and take it up and vote next, next week? Or is that, are we, y'all comfortable, ready? I, I know, I certainly welcome the advanced planning part of it and, and what we're doing here. But whether we want to read a little more and understand a little more, or y'all would like to vote on it? Accepting the ordinance, recommending it to councils, whichever y'all would like to do tonight. A little more.
I prefer a little time to study it, have some counsel.
It is on county council's agenda tomorrow night, but we can report to them that you want to defer action and, but it's a month, it's another month before you meet again, is that correct?
Yeah. Would that cause any problem to do that?
They wouldn't have third reading until after you meet again. So we certainly would want your recommendation before any final action of council. But we might ask them to, you know, have first reading while you continue to contemplate it.
That would be fine. We have a motion to table it the next month?
Quick question. I have a quick question based on what he just said. So I understand that this pushes it back a month if we ask. So is there something specific we're trying to get this done through quickly to get? Like, is there a specific reason that pushing it back 30 days is a big deal?
I would say no, there's no specific reason why pushing it back would be a big deal. But I also don't see any reason why it can't be on two tracks where you think about it for a month and and council will be hearing about it and be anticipating your recommendation at some point. And if there's any amendments coming from planning commission, there's still plenty of time to, uh, bring those forward to council.
Well, yeah, I don't have a problem at council, y'all discussing at council, because they may have some limitations anyway. So it wouldn't hurt for both of us to look at it the one more month anyhow and not really slow down proceeding with it.
For example, one of the things I'm hearing tonight is maybe we need to address the requirement that school district be, you know, met with and considered and, and that would be an easy revision that can be put in there. And in fact, without this, we would not have any way of requiring a school district's participation because under zoning entitlements, they're not really a consideration. So this is a tool to get them to the table.
It's crazy.
I, I think it's necessary, I mean, a lot of times we, the county negotiates, these fee in lieu of taxes, school district don't get a dime out of it. But yet they have all the others, so I, I mean, I'm preaching, my wife's preaching it to me, so I'm preaching it to y'all.
That should increase per pupil cost.
Yeah, I mean, so I, 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 I do think from, you know, us in here and, like I said, my wife keeps hollering at me too. A lot of this needs to be considered, the school district, because they end up with the brunt of it, because they show up at the door, they gotta take them, you know, whatever. And, uh, they don't have a problem with that, but they need some advanced notice of some things coming and in pass, you know, they haven't known that. So that would be one of the suggestions here, that school district is involved in at least knowledge of what's coming. So they can, you don't put a building up in a day, so.
And that's been my experience is, you know, if, if they see a need for some land, then that's our cue to say, we need ten acres from, from the landowner as part of this deal, um, for the school. Or, um, if they say, we're good, we got capacity, go for it, then, you know, that's a message we like to hear as well.
And, and that's some of the work I've done consulting, that, that was part of the deal. There was a school site put into development, so, uh.
How many houses were we talking about?
So.
Eight hundred.
Well, yeah, that, um, from what I understand, a development came proposed for eight hundred last month, is that right? Eight hundred?
Eight hundred?
But that's not what this is about.
Yeah, that's, this is to kinda start the planning process in advance before we shop with seeing something like that. This, this is an advance tool that county council is gonna start planning that, that whole impact of the development, which I think is great instead of just showing up on everybody's desk, so.
This would essentially regulate developers.
For large developments, it would give us an opportunity to address pu- public facilities that we don't have under the zoning ordinance. Because the zoning ordinance entitles things to the developer, whereas this opens a path to negotiating some community benefit for the development.
This is, yeah.
It's alright though, we have a motion to table it one month, allow county council to carry on with their reading and it'll be simultaneously, they'll discuss it and we will too. Have a motion to do that? Second, anybody?
Second.
Wait, second, alright, all in favor of holding it and putting it back on the agenda for next month?
Thank you.
All in favor? Unanimous, I think.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Chris. Alright, that took care of our two main items tonight. Uh, uh, any discussion we want, any update on county council items or anything that we need to know about? Looked like the five thirty meeting worked good for us and I hope it worked out good for y'all. Half hour, I don't have to pay our county employees, so it works out good for econ- uh, tax savings, so, uh, we did our part tonight.
We supposed to get paid for this?
I don't know how y'all get, but it's half hour, not on the. Okay, well, uh, and next regular meeting will be June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, five thirty. Does appear we may have some items.
We will at least have.
Have this one, okay? But, uh, alright, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Got one, got a second by Zoom, we'll, uh, all in favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Alright.
Alright, all, all opposed, we adjourned.